All right. At this time, I'd like to call the Village of Board of Trustees for Cottage Grove to order. It is Monday, April 20th. The agenda was properly posted. And at this point, we'll have Lisa do a roll call to confirm Corin.
Alan? Limburg?
Aye.
Aye.
Murphy?
Present.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Here.
Valencia?
Present.
Williams?
Here.
We are all here.
All right. I'll go through the little spiel here. So, the Village of Cottage Grove is holding a virtual meeting through via Zoom due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Public is welcome to this meeting through the agenda. You can see there's a link for the Zoom meeting, or as an optional, the audio is also available, but that is only audio. If you're on the Zoom, there's a chat feature, and all this is being recorded. So, your chats, and as well as the video are being, and audio being recorded for posterity. We continue to work out the kinks on this, and so bear with us when it comes to that. Staff will be monitoring as we go through, and hopefully, we won't have to utilize their services to get us through the meeting. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Matt's got it on his screen, but I've got one back here, and Lisa's got one back of hers, so. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic
To the Republic.
For which it stands
For which it stands.
One nation
One nation.
Under God
Under God.
Inevitable
Inevitable.
With the justice
For all.
All right, thanks everybody. At this time, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak regarding to the board. And we'll open it up and give everybody a moment. If there are folks that wanted it, please identify yourself so that we can record that. And it is, again, any item on the agenda or any subject not on the agenda. All right, then, if folks didn't get a chance to pipe in, there is Lisa's email on the agenda. You can certainly send her an email, and it will get out to the board for that feedback. Then we'll move on to item five is discuss and consider the regular board meeting minutes of April 6th. Any corrections, additions, comments?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Are you seconded that? Any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Item six is a presentation to the board. This is in regards to the Colonial Club. And is Bob Power on the phone or video?
I am on the phone, yes.
All right, Bob, great. And we can hear you, at least I can hear you. And I'm hoping everybody else can. So, if you would like to take it away, that would be great.
Okay. I'll try to be brief. We have been closed to the public, the building, since March 16th. However, most of our services are deemed essential. That's nutrition, the adult daycare, our support of home care, and the medical transport rides. So, we implemented our emergency plan, which calls for, you know, essential workers to remain. And so, we've, we've, there's probably about six of us left that are running operations day to day right now. The biggest one has been nutrition, so I'll focus on that quite a bit. We had to close the congregate meal site in, at our center in Sun Prairie. And there were Cottage Grove people that we were picking up every day and bringing to the club, and they would hang out, have lunch, you know, participate, and then get a ride home. All of those individuals opted to become a home-delivered meal recipient. So, we've added those to our regular route. We've changed how we're delivering. We're not delivering food every day. We were trying to cut down on the number of contacts the volunteer drivers would have. And so, we're doing two deliveries, one on Monday, which consists of a hot meal and one cold meal. And then, on Wednesdays, we do it again with another hot meal and a cold meal for Thursday and Fri-, or Wednesday and Thursday. But on Fridays, for the time being, what everybody is getting is a bag of food from the Sun Prairie Food Pantry. We talked to them and let them know, you know, that our routes consisted of multiple communities, and they were fine with that. They said, "We have the food, we want it out there, so it doesn't matter if they're not from Sun Prairie, or wherever they're at, as long as they're your clients, we're happy to provide this food." So, that Friday meal is like one of those shelf-stable meals. Like, this past week, it was a can of stew that they can open and heat. You know, the juice boxes, the canned fruit, canned juices. They had fresh pears this past week. So, it's just, again, another fifth meal that is helping us kind of reduce some of our costs, and that we're not producing that Friday meal at this point. We expect that to continue. The Sun Prairie Food Pantry is happy to do so. And there, we, there's like some little changes that some of the recipients have not been crazy about. Like, on Wednesday, instead of getting Little Carton some milk, they're actually getting a half gallon of milk, which Sassy Cow is providing for the food pantry. Like, it's about the freshest milk I've ever seen in my life. Ready to go on Monday, and we get it out there Wednesdays. So, that donation is coming in. So, we're trying to take advantage of all the donations that we can in order to, again, try to keep some of our costs in, under control, because we know they're going up. We've had to switch some of the materials that we normally would get in a food order to make it safer. And a big example is bread. Normally, most meals, there's a slice of bread, a piece of butter, and we have volunteers that, you know, it's just bulk bread. They put it in a baggie with a slab of butter and seal it up, and away it goes. So, now, instead of doing that, we're ordering prepackaged rolls and bread. So, it's sealed at the bakery, so there's no potential there for, you know, any kind of cross-contamination. Same thing, we're having to order, as you might guess, a lot more home-delivery supplies, because we're just using so much more. We had been doing about 125 meals every day just for the Colonial Club. And then, we also do the meals for the Forest Area Senior Center and their home-delivered meals, and that was about another 40 to 45. So, we were up to about 165 to 170. And right now, we're just over 200. So, we've gone up about 30 meals in the past month since this has taken over. I can just tell you that if you encounter anybody, any of your residents in the village, if you know they might be benefit from getting a meal, call. You know, we're adding people daily. The intake process can be done over the phone with one of our case managers. It's pretty quick turnaround time. You know, we had three people call on Friday, and they all got meals today. So, it's not a terribly difficult process to get somebody on the home-delivered meal list. The only requirement they're really enforcing right now is that they're over the age of 60. Today, we have a nice gift from Texas Roadhouse. They called a couple of weeks ago and offered some food. So, today, they got Texas Roadhouse Chicken Salad Teas and their dinner rolls. So, you know, put a different twist on it, got something a little different than what we normally do. So, hopefully, that went over well. We have, you know, that's kind of the area we're most concerned about, again, with cost and increased cost. We do get funding from the county to deliver this program, but every year since I've been here, it's been, that's been 12 years, we never get enough money from the county to cover all those costs, because the senior is only required to pay $4 for the meal. And if even, if they don't have that money, they still get it. We don't, you know, enforce that. That's a federal program from the Older Americans Act. So, every year, we're raising a lot of money. This year, for 2020, we, it was budgeted that we would have to raise about $42,000 for our nutrition program to break even. So, knowing that, now, we're probably not going to get to do Strawberry Fest and many other events throughout the year. Other revenue generating services are down. Again, we're trying to do all we can to maintain costs, but still keep a safe and effective delivery going on. The delivery, that's also a little different. We're requiring the volunteers not to have any face-to-face contact. They, it's all bagged, the food is all bagged. The driver will put it on the door, ring the bell. If they don't have, if they can't hang it on the door, we've gotten tables to put beside the door, whatever it may be. They ring the bell, they go back to their car, and they wait until somebody picks out the meal. If they don't pick up the meal, if they don't open the door, the driver, within five minutes, then the driver will call our office, and then we will call that individual. We can't give, of course, phone numbers of clients to those volunteers, so that's kind of the way we have to do that in order to make sure somebody's safe. So far, again, everything's going well. We've done our first, we're doing check-ins as well. So, the case management team and some of our staff that's working remotely from home are doing phone calls. We've contacted, we're in the process of contacting everybody that's on the home-delivered meal list, making sure they have everything they need, that they're getting their meals, if they have any other needs. And thus far, things, you know, we're getting, you know, really positive, positive comments from people. The medical rides is the other big thing that had been going on, but those have dramatically decreased due to the, to the virus. You know, a lot of the appointments were just like regular doctors' checkups. Anything non-essential has been canceled. Most of the time, that's the doctor, as you probably know, canceling those things. We are still providing some rides for people with chemo treatments, dialysis, that kind of stuff. And again, all the appropriate protocols are being taken to make sure that transport is safe for the driver and the passenger. But they're really, again, our, our list has been greatly reduced. I think we might be doing one or two of those rides a week now instead of 20 to 25. Our Adult Day Center is still open. We had been serving about, on an average, of 14 people in the day center. That has dropped to three, but those three individuals, actually four, four kind of alternates a couple of days. But those individuals were really desperate for us to keep that, that service open. So, we've been able to do that. We have a nurse and one other worker in that area. And if you've ever been in the building, when you come in the sliding glass doors, that is all off to your right. And so, that, that part of the building is secure, nobody else goes in there. Of course, we're doing all the appropriate cleaning. We take temperatures on the clients every day when they come in and when they leave to go home. So, we're monitoring that temperature to make sure nothing happens in, in the meantime, when they're at home. Our Home Chore Program, kind of the same thing. A lot of people have canceled their non-essential home care appointments. That would be things like just basic housekeeping. But we are still sending aides to people's homes to do medication checks, which is helping somebody set up their meds for the week. We're also doing bathing for those individuals that get that. Again, aides being CNA, they follow all the protocols that are required. But that, that number has dropped off quite a bit. Case managers are working remotely from home. They're checking in with all of those clients as well, doing, trying to do, get everybody checked in within a 10-day period. We have about 170-some clients that we're checking in on, making sure, again, they have what they need. We think we're going to see an emerging need of people needing groceries. I think in the beginning, everybody was pretty set, but as time goes on, that is emerging as a problem for some seniors to be able to get out and get to the store and get some groceries. So, we do have some volunteers lined up that will be able to do that. We've also done some emergency runs for people to get their medications, as long as they can set it up so the pharmacy will allow us to pick it up, and that it can be paid for over the phone. We are doing that as well for seniors. That's kind of it on the programs. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Then I'll
Oops, go ahead, Bob.
Then I'll just tell you quickly about the financial side, which of course is a, is a big issue. We did, we managed to get our application in for the federal PPP funds, the Paycheck Protection Program through our bank at the Bank of Sun Prairie. That did get approved, and we, those loan documents actually just got back to me today. The money's not quite there yet, but they're hopeful it should be in the next couple of days. So, we've got a little breathing room with that. We applied for $27,000 through the Boys and Girls Club that they, when they had their application a couple of weeks ago, we were awarded $5,000, so we got some of that. And then, we've applied for the rest of the funding that was going through the United Way, and they just indicated this afternoon that they were awarding several grants. They have like about one and a half million dollars to distribute. And four of us in Sun Prairie, the Food Pantry, Sunshine Place, Shelter from the Storms Ministries, and the Colonial Club went together, and we submitted a grant for $99,000. Every, the other three agencies asked for 25 even, and I asked for $24,000, and we received light word today that that was approved. So, I'm hopeful that we'll be doing, you know, doing okay with this fundraising. We, we've got some money in savings, so thus far, you know, bills are being paid. People are getting their paychecks. You know, it's just going to be how long this, this goes on. One thing, if, if anybody might be interested, there's another piece of the food program that I wanted to bring to your attention. The county, Dan County, purchased emergency FEMA meals. So, again, shelf-stable type food, boxes of juice, boxes of soup, or cans of soup, all of that kind of stuff. Each box contains five days' worth of meals for an individual. They bought enough for every senior center in the county to give every single one of our meal recipients a week's worth of, of supplies. So, we're going to start delivering those boxes on Fridays, and we're going to actually start this Friday. And I'm not sure if there might be anybody there interested in doing one of the Cottage Grove routes, or both of the Cottage Grove routes. We have two routes. One has 10 people on it, one has 12 people on it. But if you are, you know, shoot me an email and let me know, and we can get you on the list. If you can't do this Friday, we're going to be doing it again. We'll probably alternate, do it every other week until we get all these boxes out to everybody. I think that's all I had on my list.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Any questions from board members?
Well, you, most of you have, should have my email, so shoot me a note if you do.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the information you provided us, and I hope that you guys keep staying sane, doing what you're doing, and it's like taking good care. So, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Bob, this is Sarah Valencia. I also wanted to say thank you for your hard work and looking out for our citizens, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you know, you know, if there's anybody in the area that, again, might have, some people are having, like Texas Roadhouse had excess food that they needed to get rid of, you know, we're a great conduit to get that done. And again, just a reminder, if you run across anybody that you think might need a meal, let us know. We'll get them enrolled in the program.
Yeah, Bob, I have a couple of questions. I understand that United Way discontinued funding. Do you folks, do you have any reason why they discontinued funding?
I do. They indicated that in their new funding structure with their regular program funding, that their focus is going to be on families with children between the ages of birth and five years of age. So, you know, that kind of shuts out the senior center. We might have been able to, had we done some collaborative thing with an agency that did serve that age group, we might have been able to get some funding, but that, you know, we didn't have that. It just doesn't really make sense for us to do that. The Sunshine Place in Sun Prairie had applied for funding as well. They hadn't received any program funding earlier, but they were invited to apply, and they went through the whole process last fall, and then told, "No, you're not getting any money." And it was, it was kind of a difficult process, and it was, it was a difficult situation in how United Way handled the communications part of notifying people about that. I was left voicemails, letting me know that our $50,000 was gone. We had a meeting at the United Way a couple of weeks later, and, you know, it was just, they weren't even going to talk about it. So, it's, it's been kind of challenging, but I do give them lots of credit for getting this, this emergency fund together. They've done a great job with that. It was a quick turnaround. We submitted that grant just a week ago Friday, and they had decisions out today, and we're supposed to get some of that money by the, by this Friday. But for the future, for program purposes, older adults aren't in the mix.
All right, all right, I appreciate that. Have other communities that you service done anything to help make up that deficit?
We have not done that yet. You know, I was trying to, well, I was just looking around to see what, what all of our options were. I didn't want to make any, any knee-jerk reaction, if you will. You know, we found out about this, ironically enough. I was going into my finance committee meeting with my board at 1:00 on this Friday afternoon, and United Way left me the message at 10:30 that morning. And we had already had our 2020 budget together. So, my board decided that we had enough money in our savings and enough set aside in cash in our endowments that we could get through 2020 without any major losses. It was going to be tough, it was going to be tight, but we were thinking, if, you know, we can raise all the funds that we normally do, we'd get through it, and we could spend a year trying to figure out how we wanted to address that funding gap. And then this happened. So, so no, we haven't asked the city of Sun Prairie for any other money at this point. The town of Bristol did ask me to submit to them our funding. So, we did send out a funding plea letter to our constituents, to our, to our donors in the last couple of weeks. And we had an envelope placed in the Sun Prairie newspaper for donations, and we've been getting a decent response to that. So, the town of Bristol responded that way. They haven't, they said they planned to give us something, but they hadn't, they didn't ask me for a specific amount. And again, at this point, you know, I think we can get to the fall, and I think probably what you would see is me coming to you this fall again and saying, you know, this much more could help, you know, even out this next year.
Sure, sure, Pat, that, thank you very much. Again, appreciate all your efforts in helping the citizens of our community and the others that you provide services to.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Bob? From the board?
All right, well, thanks, everybody, good luck.
And thanks again, Bob, for coming presenting, as well as all the good that you, you do and your organization does.
All righty, thank you.
Yep, take care. All right, then we'll move on to item seven is new business. Discuss and consider a bid to award for the virus road creek crossing. There's some memos in your packet. I don't know if we want to start with JJ, or we want to start with Kevin. Flip the coin, guys. Probably, probably Kevin, I suppose, yours is in there first.
Yeah, sorry about that, I think I was on mute. Can you hear me now, though?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, we got bids back on the Creek Crossing project. Had, I think, six bidders bid on it. The results are in the packet as well, with the low bidder being RG Houston, with a total of $174,000 for the construction. So, I provided a memo that basically kind of goes over some things. My understanding is the village has a total of $110,000 that was budgeted for the project. I'm not sure exactly where the number of $110,000 came from, besides coming from MSA, as far as what it included. The big items that I kind of tried to go over that I don't think were included was there is a box covert there that had to be extended to get the path over, and then there's an associated railing with it. And the extension of that box covert has to be, it's basically structurally designed, and that's all included in the bid package and everything as well, so it's bid on that way. And then, the associated railing for safety. But those two items came up to about $83,500 of the project as well. So, that obviously was well beyond what the numbers that were given to the village previously. So, my memo kind of shows what the total would be, what the engineering was, what the construction cost is for the low bidder, and then an estimate of 6% for construction services. There's not utilities with this project, so it's more just a path and the roadway. There's not utilities with this project, so it's more just a, a path in the roadway type of stuff. So we're not putting water and sewer in with this portion of it, so six percent seemed, um, is pretty reasonable for that. So, um, in general, the eighty-three thousand five hundred for the extension, if you look at those items in these bids, it um, is probably more than I would have anticipated it was gonna be either. Um, but it's obviously more than just laying in a, a culvert pipe, but it is fairly, um, I think it's the second low of those two items all the way through, um, when you go through those. So there's other ones that instead of eighty-three thousand, you'd be looking at over a hundred thousand for those items. So everything seemed pretty comparable. So, um, I don't anticipate cost would go down in the future on a lot of these things. Um, you know, asphalt prices are still pretty decent right now. Um, the concrete work is, is, you know, pretty decent. Um, so, um, it's just a matter of, I guess, how, um, I understand this is part of the borrow, is how it would be funded, so as to whether um, that can uh, that can happen or not. And I guess I didn't see JJ's memo in there, so JJ, do you have anything to add to it?
Um, no, I'll just uh, reference where the, the amount came from. Our, our previous engineer and I, just working with annually prior to the financial, manage the plan, um, would just talk about prices and then he, he told me to put in ninety to a hundred for this one. Uh, again, Kevin, I think we're kinda speculating, but it does look like perhaps the uh, culvert extension was an oversight. Um, we bumped it up to a hundred and ten just to incorporate the uh, the crosswalk addition uh, to BB that'll happen later this year, but that's, I mentioned that in my memo, that's something we determined after talking to Public Works, that that's something we can take care of with our operating budget, our annual concrete work. So ultimately, this project, the budget was a hundred and ten and kind of have what we have here.
Questions from board members or comments?
I guess I will.
I have a.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I, I have a question, I guess, uh, uh, the initial cost we used for budgeting, uh, I guess I'm just trying to figure out why that, why the additional two items were missed at that time and they're included now. Uh, there seems to be kind of a ongoing track record of things being missed from a budgeting perspective versus the actual cost to do them.
Yep, and I would uh, I would agree with that. I, I don't have an exact answer as to why they were missed um, previously. You know, that's obviously, same with me, that, you know, um, we've got a thing or a policy here at MSA that things, you know, obviously moving forward, everything's gonna go through me. Um, like I said, JJ was working with uh, Mike at the time and like I said, I, I don't know where the numbers came from, I looked back in our files and I don't have anything that states that. So, you know, he was kinda, so just kinda getting some ballpark numbers, but I, I usually, I try to do a walkthrough of the sites or at least a drive-through to see what things are gonna look at, um, that the projects are gonna consist of, try to put together a spreadsheet, you know, with everything included on it. Um, you know, that's my policy I've done for other places and will be here moving forward and everything. So I don't have an answer as to why it was missed, um, but it, it definitely was.
Alright, uh, thank you.
JJ, were you gonna make a comment?
Well, I'm just gonna point out, I know there was a lot in the packet. Um, my only recommendation, completely understand any hesitation um, uh, number-wise, but this is one that I know I've heard from many of you and other elected officials in a lot of residents over the years. And unfortunately, um, this particular location, there's not likely to be another project where this, this path, this crossing could be made, could be incorporated in. That's the only thing I wanted to, you know, there's not, Vilas isn't gonna expand at this location anytime soon and um, you know, there's no development that'll happen here that's gonna uh, allow us to incorporate this into a larger scale project. So just a, a note there that, you know, understanding it's over budget, but it's also not likely to be incorporated in anything else or prices to, to go down on this now that it's been designed.
And JJ, I think you had mentioned this before, we're, we are gonna do, redo Clark Street next, the plan is for next year, uh, incorporating the bike path and everything through the park. Um, this was one of those connections, I think, that at least in Public Works we talked about was needed um, in anticipation of getting pedestrians over towards the Bakken Park from, from that part of the community. That's, that's the unfortunate thing is this is part of a larger plan, I think, and that everybody, we've been talking about is, as in committee as well as a little bit in, in the board level. Sticker shock though, to say the very least.
Um, I had one question. Um, so what I don't understand is if the uh, box culvert wasn't in the initial figures for um, when we first had our budget, did all the companies then figure out that we needed that and that's how it got in there or?
Um, well, yeah, Kevin, I'll, I'll let you, I'll just briefly. I think Mike may have kind of just done a, a back of that king, top of his head type of thing, is my guess. I mean, we knew the basics that this culvert had to extend because a path was going over it. Um, my guess is that he, he didn't do like Kevin said and get on a spreadsheet and do a rough um, cost analysis to that extent. Um, I'm thinking he ballparked it um, prior to our meetings and I, I too was shocked at how much those came in and I didn't know that that piece of a stormwater chunk would be that much, but um, obviously they are.
I can add to it, I guess, just a little bit is to, I guess, you know, like I said, I, I've worked with Mike in the years and I don't wanna throw him just under the bus or anything, obviously, on anything in particular, but um, I definitely utilize the, the staff that we have at MSA. We've got structural people that, you know, when we went and started looking at the design on this, they had told me that, you know, you were probably looking at fifty thousand dollars or something like that. Um, that was just right before bidding, you know, when we were trying to put the design together and everything. So, um, you know, like I said, I, I try to go through all them. I use our uh, traffic experts, I use our stormwater experts and our structural experts when some of this stuff comes up and try to put together a, an overall spreadsheet of, of everything that would be included using those. And like I said, I, there isn't one that exists for this project, so I was kind of assuming that possibly his numbers were for, maybe didn't even include the culvert extension. It sounds like he talked with JJ that, it sounds like they knew there had to be one, but I was thinking maybe it didn't even include it and it was just the length of a path with asphalt and some gravel and, you know, that's, that's where he kinda ballparked his numbers from, cuz you take out that structure, it's at least in the ballpark of. But I, I don't know that and like I said, um, I, I don't know where the numbers exactly came from.
So Kevin and JJ, is there any other design option or anything else that would bring the cost closer to our budgeted number? Any changes that could be made or are we at the bare bones already?
I guess my opinion on it is we're pretty much at the bare bones. Um, we're only extending, you know, to do this and make the wing walls and that, we're actually only extending the culvert, it's only like extending it about eight feet. Um, and that's just to get some safety room between the road and the path. And then I think the culvert extends like two feet beyond the path for a clear zone, what's required by a path and everything, but for that. So, um, the culvert's gotta be the size it is. If we start restricting the culvert size or something, then you have to deal with flooding, um, you know, that it restricts floodwaters upstream and everything, so um, I, I don't see it changing too awful much, I'm guessing.
Uh, no, I'd agree, there's no bells and whistles on this at all.
And John, you were saying before about how it ties in with the Bakken Park project. Can you just elaborate? I'm not on either of any of those committees, so I'm not quite sure what the overall plan is or how this, how this intersects with that.
Uh, so the discussion, at least in, a bit in Public Works was, this is another way to get people to, to uh, Clark Street. Obviously, there's three ways. If you, if you cheat and go over the, sneak through the, by hydrate there on that secret path or sidewalk that's not supposed to be there, um, over the railroad tracks, that's one way. Um, the other end of, of Clark is another and this would be another way for citizens to get over there. That, that was the initial discussion. We also had, and JJ, I don't know if this is confusing matters, but at one point we talked about a, a donated bridge and perhaps maybe that was, where that, that was gonna be just as expensive, more expensive than a culvert, so I'm not sure.
Yep, and I think, I think maybe Mike had put more thought into that plan cuz we had discussed that at length, that was uh, conversation at the board, maybe three or more years ago. Uh, they kinda fell through. Um, so, you know, perhaps it was more of a um, kind of flip the switch and just he had to get us a number for budgeting um, on this and, and that's where kind of the oversights occurred because he was thinking about uh, basically the support for a bridge for the years prior to that. Um, but yeah, that was gonna be just as costly even with, even if a, a donation or a trade could have been worked out. Sounded like there was quite a bit that would have been needed for the bridge supports anyway.
Uh, Sarah, does that answer your question? Sorry, I shot over a little bit.
Yes, yes, it does, thank you.
Um, I think Matt shared with me that the, the additional um, about a hundred thousand is, you know, a quick calculation in the, in the borrowing schemes is about two dollars per resident per year over the twenty-year financing. So um, Matt was kind enough to, to check that out for us uh, prior to the meeting. Um, just to have another piece of data in your mind um, on this.
Um, I, I don't like that we're budgeted again, um, but I think it's important to have it, have this connection there um, for the safety of our residents because people do use it. Um, and so I'm going to make a motion to award bid to RG Houston, amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Okay, is, thank you Melissa, is there a second?
I'll second, this is Sarah.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, this is just one, this is John, uh, one point of clarification. This is just actually the bridge across the creek. It doesn't extend sidewalks any further from Progress or Wheel Bridge down Vilas, is that correct?
Yep, it's actually, like John said, it's a piece of a big, large uh, puzzle, but technically there's still gonna be a challenge. Yep, this project still won't get you safely off the path, off through the roadway, straight to Bakken. Yep, it's just connecting that piece over the creek on Vilas between Well Bridge and Progress and then there's still the town portion of, of Clark Street at Vilas there, a railroad crossing. I think the concern I always heard about this one though is the people that walk, once they get there, can get themselves safely off the roadway, I mean, over in the gravel and, and away as they make their cross across the railroad tracks. But at this location, they're, they're either teetering on the edge or falling in the creek or inside the barricade on the roadway. But yep, you're absolutely right, John, it's not a complete, you know, path to safely get anybody through the park quite yet. Thank you.
Yeah, and John, to that point, we'll have to certainly examine that with, with Clark Street reconstruction. Um, we'll probably, obviously have to work with both the railroad as well as the town if we're gonna make that a part of it, um, which will probably be pretty, for my understanding, working with railroads is, can be a challenge, so that, that uh, but again, it's a, it's a short hop then and certainly a, worth a engagement when we start looking at the uh, Clark Street uh, reconstruction. Uh, any other discussion regarding the motion? Okay, having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Alright, motion carries, thanks everyone. Um, item seven B then is discuss and consider the right-of-way permit for Everstream. JJ, you had some information in the packet?
Yep, um, very similar to what uh, Lion Energy did last year, but just given our experience with uh, another company uh, year and a half, two years ago, we bring these larger right-of-way permit requests through the board for approval. Um, they, I, after initial submission of the application, uh, looking at the size of the plan, I asked Kevin to, for the cost on the engineer's review. He gave it to us, they cut the check, he provided a really great review and honestly, typically I'd provide some comments, but after reading everything Kevin had, he more than covered any concerns or protections that I felt we needed. So um, reached out to them after they had time to review Kevin's review and they're fine with everything he says, which basically means they'll be forced to be clear of our village utilities, no structures in the pavement, nothing um, above flush mount on the ground. Um, they're aware of all of the new infrastructure that runs along and now, um, and that's their challenge to me. Uh, basically with, with Kevin's review, it's just a, and the fifty thousand dollar bond, uh, we're protected. So, is there any questions?
JJ, you, you made a, a comment there regarding all of the other infrastructure that's been put in place, particularly around like Old Town and that area. Are there really concerns about the amount of, you know, utilities, wires, uh, everything that's in there that they gotta kinda sort through?
I've had that concern since I was involved in construction first time over twenty-some years ago. Um, and it is remarkable, the technology they use to locate these things and find them and the way they are able to, to miss each other. But um, if you go walk down Vilas Town now, you'll see that they also have been taking great care of these, these crews and, and making ugly holes in the concrete, the asphalt, which currently uh, the alliance contractor is gonna be in the process of, of, of fixing this summer. And I'm sure these guys will do the same thing, that they will actually, you know, pothole locate these things as they cross them um, and make sure that they're missing. Uh, yeah, eventually rightaways are gonna be full, but it's really, you know, with these protections in place, it's on them to find a, a spot to get in there.
Other, other questions from board members?
Um, this is Heidi. Uh, will property owners be notified if they're going to have a vault in their yard or if, uh, are they digging like into grass or is it through a pipe that's already there or?
This will be, well, they're gonna be laying the, the conduit and then they'll pull their fiber through when they're completely done. It's gonna be exactly like uh, Alliance was typically, or actually they're gonna run along the same side of the street where a lot of that was done last year. And so that is, again, it's all in the right-of-way and none of these are the, the TDS public utility improvements that are people's yards. Um, and I don't know that we took any calls just because it's all along and, and so nobody um, nobody really kinda considered that area, their yard, even uh, on the southern half of, of Main Street there. I don't think anybody was concerned just because there are already out infrastructure there along Main Street. But we can, they've been really good to work with, so I mean, we could add that stipulation that, that they notify homeowners of anything that'll be installed permanently. I think the challenge they may have um, in telling folks that they'll be digging in their yard is they may plan not to, but they come across if they can't locate a, a utility or whatever and we want them to be digging, you know, and they're not gonna wanna shut down operations to wait to get hold of the homeowners and take the whole okay something. But I think we could, we could ask if they notify anybody where any of these uh, uh, the boxes are gonna be placed, even the flush mount.
And there's a specific contact that we would get in touch with if there was some kind of issue to help connect?
Yep, I've always got a, a contact.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I'll make the motion to approve the Everstream right-of-way permit approval uh, as presented with the uh, measures in place presented by MSA as well as uh, Heidi's point to notify the uh, affected homeowners.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a mo- motion and second, is there any further discussion then? Alright, having heard, heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Alright, um, moving on then to item seven B, C, I'm sorry. Discuss and consider up-net renewal agreement. That was from Larry, if you're on. You're on mute right now, Larry, according to.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, the unmute button wasn't working. This is, Rick actually handled this. He's, I think, um, on the line. By the way, when we're both. Uh, uh, in meetings like this, we we don't both bill the village, but, uh. Some of it is just each of us keeping up with our parts of what we do for you, but we work that out on that end to make sure that we're not double billing. Um, there are, there there could be situations in which it's really critical to have us both, but for the most part, that won't happen. So this is really just very simple. It was timed to to re-up on the up net contract and. Um, and Rick put together a a revised contract so we don't have to pay. You don't have to pay us to do this over and over again. Um, it'll automatically renew. Um, the contract was fairly strong already in terms of the protections for the village and the village is getting a good deal for the use of some of its real estate. There are some space on its tower and there's really not much there unless people have questions.
Larry, I would just add that, um, under nor- normal circumstances, we'd likely send this to the utility commission and the utility commission would. Likely has the authority to unilaterally approve something like this, but since the. Uh, commission hasn't been meeting during these times, it made sense to to bring it here. And and also I was, uh, talking on mute before, uh, Larry, I apologize. I was. I was calling on Rick, but no one was hearing me because I was on mute, so.
That's right.
Just a quick question for JJ. Any? Any concerns about this being on our tower? I mean, they gotta put it up, they gotta maintain it, et cetera.
Yep, no, they've been up there for a few years now and I actually been, uh, great. Uh, I think they've only called once maybe since installation and it's been great for connecting our buildings. So, nope, no complaints at all.
Okay, good. Any questions from board members? Or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
We got a a motion from Troy. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Jeff. So, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, then moving on to reports from, uh, boards, commissions and committees. The first one up is Plan Commission. We actually had a discussing consider on here, so I'll go through that. First before, um, running through, um, what we covered in the Plan Commission last week. And certainly Melissa can pipe in on that as well, but, uh, the item was to discuss and consider a resolution twenty twenty. Dash O two regarding consistency of the village proposed urban service area amendment. Uh, with the Village of Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan. So, uh, I'll let Aaron give a little bit of context to that. Which he gave to the plan.
Sure, um, we submitted our application for an urban service area amendment. The bulk of the amendment is, um. What, a hundred and fifty acres, uh, located northwest of the Ann and TT intersections and north of the interstate. Um, the majority of that is Gray Wolf's property. It's another, um, sizable chunk that Jim and Mary Ann Greedy own. And then a few smaller parcels. Um, that area is designated as office and light industrial on the comp plan and that's what, um, is being proposed by. Uh, both Gray Wolf and, uh, the Greedy family as uses up there. Uh, the CDA has recently reviewed Gray Wolf's proposed master plan for that area and it was consistent with. Uh, their vision for the area. Um, there's also a small half acre sliver that was, uh, overlooked as part of the West Lawn. If that, uh, that was not included in the last, uh, urban service area expansion. Um, it's not adding any residential units to the urban service area. This is basically backyards of some parcels in a future phase. Um, so we're cleaning that up as well at this time.
All right, any questions for Aaron?
Did, I didn't see in the memo or in the, um, packet how the Plan Commission, was there discussion at the Plan Commission or, uh? Did they vote on it there?
Yeah, they approved the resolution.
Okay. Were there any concerns or questions from the Plan Commission?
No.
No, this is consistent with what the the CDA has been talking about for a while now for that area north of the interstate. Um, Aaron's put a lot of effort into getting this kind of sketched out as well. Um, certainly there's been, uh, the market research and the research and the engineering and everything that, uh, the CDA worked with. The with Joe Wagner Group or Gray Wolf Group, uh, that investment has been put in. So there's been a lot of. Uh, work on, this is just another step. And obviously this will have to jump through CARPSY and that process. But this is our piece of of that effort to get, uh, that the initial property of the three hundred acres in. The service area. And then as Aaron said, there's a that small parcel we've just gotta clean up in West Lawn.
Um, John, I would just say it's a hundred fifty. I know there are three hundred acres out there, but it's a hundred fifty that are being. Brought in right now. Um, that's what Gray Wolf has been planning for and that's certainly probably a.
Yeah, it cut out. Or maybe I'd, go ahead.
I'll I'll go again, um. You you mentioned three hundred acres. It's actually a hundred fifty acres. That's approximately a hundred fifty acres in the amendment, not three hundred. There are three hundred acres out there, but for this amendment, it's being proposed as a hundred fifty, just as that's a. Um, more reasonable planning parameter for the next ten to twenty years.
Right, I'm sorry. I I thought I had mentioned a hundred fifty of the three hundred, so yes, you you are correct.
And then the public hearing is May fourteenth. Is that correct, Aaron?
Yes.
Can I? This is Heidi. I'm on the CARPSY. And I just wanna add that the public hearings on May fourteenth, a little info about that. It will take place on Zoom. And you can visit their website for the Zoom meeting ID. Uh, they do ask for a registration. When you enter into the Zoom meeting, it's basically just asking for your name, your title. If you have any questions or comments specific to, um, the public hearing that you're attending. So. Um, it just takes a couple extra minutes to sign on for the CARPSY public hearing.
Thank you, Heidi. Any other questions regarding the resolution? And what it's, uh, what it's for?
This is Sarah. I can move to approve the resolution twenty twenty dash O two regarding. The consistency of the village's proposed urban service area amendment with the Village of Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan.
I think Melissa beat it, Troy. Uh, all right, it's motion second. Is there any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, the other items that were covered in the Plan Commission, and again, uh, Melissa, jump in. Where there was a. No formal action on a request from Tim Olson to amend, uh, the comprehensive plan. For a couple parcels totaling seventy-two acres, uh, which is basically essentially across from. Uh, Bakken on Vilas there up, you know, around the corner from Caulk Town. It, uh, it allows. Tim's development to be a little more, uh, complete and with an actual in and out. Um, three in and out areas rather than what was initially proposed was just one. So it it. Does that and there and it coincides with, uh, another potential development the town is considering up in that off of Coffee Town. Again, normal, no formal action, just a discussion, uh, a few questions by the Plan Commission, but. Um, supportive overall, the commission was. Again, another no, no act, no formal action was a a comprehensive plan. For future land designation for a couple parcels, um, on. The lot six eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, uh, of Northern Estates, um, again. This is North Lawn Estates, sorry. The first edition, this is again for, um, just allowing, um. More, um. More options for those parcels. Next one was, um, and again, no action to be taken, discuss potential zoning amendments, uh, to conditional use permits. Um, Aaron has been working diligently on kind of sorting through all that. Uh, this is in, uh, response to the state law changes. And we need to make some adjustments in ours just to, uh, ensure that we're getting things where we think they should be overall. And so the, uh, Aaron's direction from the commission was to continue to move forward with with what he's doing. In that effort and then bring it back to the commission. Uh, another item then was for, uh, Madison, City of Madison is now engaging the village and the town. Uh, in regards to a potential border agreement. Again, this is just, uh, for direction from the commission and the commission, uh. Asked staff to continue moving forward with with those discussions. And that was the extent of Plan Commission meeting on Wednesday, um, the fifteenth. Melissa, you have anything to add or I missed or Aaron?
Nope, you covered it all.
All right. Then next we have, uh. Parks and Recreation Committee. Uh, Heidi?
Hello, so, uh, we do have one, uh, action item under that. So again, we can, um. Take that, uh, right away before we go into the other topics. Um, Arbor Day is coming up and usually there is some kind of ceremony. Sean can feel free to jump in, but this is, uh. Just to recognize it this year and we can do something later. You have anything to add, Sean?
Yeah, the, um, the DNR waived the restrictions on, uh, actually the twenty-fourth being Arbor Day. So, most important thing is that we do have a proclamation for Arbor Day. We can still say that it's on Friday, but. What we plan on doing is is publicizing the event and asking people to get out and enjoy nature. And I've got a little quiz for. For kids that that they can participate in and then once, uh, things are in a better place, we'll do a a public, a more public, uh, tree planting. Of at least one tree, um, that we will publicize in advance.
I'll make a motion to approve the. Twenty twenty, uh, proclamation for Arbor Day.
All right. All right, this is motion second. Then is there discussion, Melissa?
I was just gonna say that maybe we should plant a tree by the Piggly Wiggly so we don't have to keep getting. And for the, um, Christmas in the Grove.
I think Bank of Sun Prairie was talking about planting one there. Make that part of our Arbor Day, uh, celebration.
All right, we have a motion and second and a good suggestion as well. Um, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries then.
All right, so the rest of our meeting then, um, we were kind of a trial committee for Zoom and I think it went pretty well. We met, uh, last week on Thursday and, uh, we talked about the Miracle Field lease agreement. So that'll come forward in full, um, later, but this was kind of to get some direction for. Sean from the committee about, uh, electric usage and how to phrase that in the agreement. Uh, so the committee recommended that the village cover that, uh, you can see in the packet. That's kind of the maximum, um, cost that we projected for electric usage, uh, for the Miracle Field. Um, there's dirt being moved in Bakken Park for the shelters, so that's exciting. You can see our Facebook page for. Uh, some, um, bird's eye view images, uh, that we'll be tracking on social media. Um, do have to rearrange a few items for the shelter. Uh, there's a. Uh, we're planning to put a security system in, which would involve video cameras. To monitor the site, uh, at all times. That item was not originally added in the final bid. So, we're going to swap out, putting in the shade structures and do that out of the Park Development Fund next year. So we can get the security system installed as soon as possible. Um, but keep an eye on the Facebook page for some exciting progress. On the shelter splash pad area and then, uh, the Miracle League as well. Um, I don't know, Sean, you wanna talk about a couple things that Parks and Rec is doing? You may have noticed the parks have been closed and. Um. Caution tape, uh, for safety recommendations from, um, places bigger than us. And we took those to make sure our residents are safe. Uh, but Sean has a couple cool things going on in the rec department, uh, for our community.
Yeah, Heidi, if it's okay, I'll, I was gonna talk during the COVID nineteen update, um, down the agenda, but, um. It's okay, I'll just hold off till then.
Sure, that sounds good. You'll get all that good info then. Um, so our, we're. Planning to meet next month depending on if there's, uh, any major items. Otherwise, we might go every other month depending on, you know, how this progresses in the coming months.
All right, thanks Heidi, uh, and Sean. So, we'll move on then to Deer Grove EMS.
Uh, we met last Thursday. Um, it looks like, uh, February and March. Uh, calls were on par with last year. Uh, we did several different standard operating procedure approvals. Uh, because of the COVID nineteen. Deer Grove EMS also purchased some additional personal protection equipment. Uh, we're keeping track of that extra cost for possible reimbursement. And, uh, Johnson and Block, Johnson Block and Company, uh, did a presentation on financials. Uh, for the year and it quote unquote, they said it was a good year for the district, uh, no, no concerns or questions. And, uh, we will have a virtual meeting on May twenty-first, Thursday, May twenty-first. Any questions at all? Did I miss anything? Um, Sarah?
Nope, I think you got it, thanks.
Um, here's a quick question from my perspective. Has, has committee talked about or has has Chief Lang? Raised any concern about PPE and the supply that they have and?
They have not at this point, uh, President Williams, um, uh, they haven't raised a concern about what they have and 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 needs. Uh, one of the things that we talked about was the N ninety-five, uh, face mask reuse. Uh, you know, as a standard operating procedure to try to get those to go further than just a single use type of item.
Yeah, I would second that. I don't, they they, um, have not indicated they have any issues. I think Troy, um, they got some. Supply from the national stockpile, at least they applied for some, and they haven't had to use their N ninety-fives. They've only had to use two N ninety-fives and in this time period. So, sounds like they're doing all right. On preserving their PP.
Okay. Thank you both. Uh, then we will move on to reports from village officers. Uh, first one up is legal briefs. Larry or Rick?
So, the, um, the only thing that I had to report is we, um, we did receive word that. I received a text, uh, just as this meeting started that the. just as this meeting started that the Northern Grove School District has approved the developer agreement unanimously tonight. So we'll be working, moving towards execution on that and putting that one in the rearview mirror.
All right. That's it, Larry?
That's it for me.
Okay, that's good news. All right, then we'll then move on to COVID nineteen updates. Matt, do you want to start us off?
Sure. President Williams and I discussed since Plan Commission and the board have been successful here utilizing Zoom meetings. We had, as you all know, we've canceled other meetings for the most part in the month of April. But looking into May, it made sense, we think it makes sense to roll out for our other standing committees. So CDA, Public Works, Utility Commission, Parks and Rec and LEC. And to have those happen virtually with Zoom. And each staff person that would host that has been familiar with this and, and we, and we have them set up with individual hosting licenses. So we can start to roll that out and we'll keep our fingers crossed that in June, you know, maybe some meetings can start to be happening face to face with social distancing, but we'll have to wait and see on that. So in the meantime, other miscellaneous committees such as, such as ad hoc committees, we'll still try to forego those in May and shoot for June. If there is still a need to do all meetings virtual in June, then we'll, we'll try to roll those out with Zoom as well. But we try not, we're trying not to, you know, overwhelm the virtual meeting process so far. So this is kind of a logical rollout for the month of May. Any questions on, questions or concerns on that from anybody? All right, and then the chamber is spearheading a task force, a business recovery task force. Aaron and I are participating in that and it started last week. You may have seen a survey that has gone around and we're helping to circulate with businesses to help gather how and if they are applying for any recovery assistance. And, and to try to figure out how we can help them with that if they're having problems. And also, also just gathering information and trying to figure out the impact to our community so far from a business standpoint. So that's all I have. If there's any questions, otherwise I'll turn it over to Chief Labor. All right, Chief?
We may have lost Dan.
Think he's maybe one of those numbers down there, but Matt, why don't you jump in and, and then Dan can come in when he can?
Yeah, from a village standpoint, I think we're sitting where we were two weeks ago. Each department is working, doing their best on keeping the, you know, staff healthy and clean. We're still UV lighting our vehicles on a regular basis to try to help cut down. I'm still keeping track of all village expenses with the help of Lisa, Deb and the department heads by giving me the information so we can apply for FEMA funds once this pandemic has ended. You know, we're going into the next phase of the governor's orders come the twenty-fourth. As of right now, he's extended the orders until the end of May. It actually is the Tuesday after Memorial Day. We've gone through the order, we've looked at it. There's really nothing that I believe we're going to change when it comes to the village itself. Everything is gonna stay status quo by keeping the parks on lockdown just to keep the social distancing at everyone's mind. But yeah, I mean, like I said, we're, we're doing good right now. The police department is fine with PPE also. I've been in contact with Chief Wang on a regular basis. So we're, we're keeping track of that and if we run short, then we have our avenues to be able to get what we need. So any questions for me?
I just unmuted Dan, Dan of, I don't know if you were trying to, maybe we're having an issue with the mute there. All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Matt, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. As far as the police department goes, we've made no scheduling changes. We don't plan to change any of our schedule at this point. Everybody's well and nobody has any COVID related illnesses nor to any of their family members. So we're continuing with business as usual. We're not one of those departments that right now isn't making any changes because we don't need to. So we've had really all, all of our carls service are down. We have no increase in domestics and we've had very few complaints or questions directed to us about COVID related or sacred home issues. So that's it from the police department.
Dan, this is Sarah. A quick question for you and I guess Lieutenant Wagner too. I know a number of other departments are concerned about the fact of the workman's comp. That it would, you would have to, the officer would have to prove if they did get COVID nineteen that it came from work. And that would only be provable if the person they were interacting with had a positive test. Are you guys concerned about that to the level that other departments are and, or not?
Not really. I don't, I don't anticipate us having too many of workmen's comp related issues. But I do know the Chiefs of Police Association of which I'm an ord member. We're definitely going to do some follow up on that and try to loosen some of those restrictions.
And do we, do you as a department have a place to go if you need your officers to be tested?
Yeah, we can request testing and I know they've opened up quite a few more places where we can go to get the testing. If we feel that there's, it's necessary right now, they're not, to my knowledge, just testing first responders such as police officers. But if someone feels that they might have the illness, then they would test us.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and you, you guys are also receiving assistance from medical professionals within the City of Madison Police Department as well?
That's right. We, we can rely upon the City of Madison's doctor and nurse who are in the police department to give us advice on matters like that. So they're, they're real, they've offered the services and they're doing that for other local departments. So they, they are a great resource for people that may be showing symptoms and or need to sit out for a while. They, they give you the advice and tell you what to do. So they're the experts in that subject area.
Right.
All right, thanks Dan. I think then we have what, Sean probably? You know, Sean, you made a little prelude of, of what you're gonna share with us, so we'll go with you next.
Yeah, I've, I've kind of reported what we've been doing in Parks and Rec as of recent, or excuse me, especially in parks. And, and things are pretty much closed down. We did receive some confirmation today from King County Health that we were kind of handling things as, as should be. I'm not sure if everybody's aware of it, but there was a new order put out today called Badger Bounce Back. I'll put that in the chat feature, which just kind of talks about how the governor has, is planning on bringing things back. If you haven't had a chance to look at that. Most importantly, staff continues to work hard on, on just remaining relevant and keeping people engaged. And obviously our, our NOVID nineteen virtual fifty K is doing really well. We're up to two hundred and fifty-two registrations and we've got thirty-four states covered as of today. So we're actually gonna meet tomorrow with some folks from Massachusetts, Florida and Utah on just trying to keep this momentum going. And not necessarily having it just be a Cottage Grove Parks and Rec program, but kind of sharing the wealth with everybody and just keeping it engaged and, and keeping folks engaged. If I can, I want to share a screen with you. I think, tell me if you guys can see that. Can you see that?
Uh, we can.
Okay, so the, I highlighted our, our Facebook stuff from twenty twenty, March of twenty twenty and March of twenty nineteen. So as you can see, I mean, we're, we're, we had twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five reaches just due to basically this program. I mean, some of our other programs have, have been huge as well, but we're, we're really, really happy with the results here. And are really looking forward to coming up with the next big program. That's it for me. Unless someone has questions? Oh, and Bakken Park, yes, Bakken Park is going. They put in the water and sewer as of last week and plan on starting to dig the Shelter Foundation mid to late this week.
Fireman festival plans, is planning to continue? Has there been any decision on that if the parks are gonna be open yet or? I know it's not up to us, but I'm curious if anybody's heard.
I have not heard anything. I mean, obviously the next order goes through the twenty-sixth of, of May. And I think we'll know a whole lot more then, but nobody's contacted me saying one way or the other.
All right, then we'll move to JJ.
The biggest things for us, we've still staff staggering start and stop times, one person per vehicle wiped down before and after. But since our last meeting, big thank you to Deb for working with our payment processing folks and getting us a deal worked out where our utility payments can be made electronically without the two ninety-nine processing fee as of early last week. And we also will be crediting anyone who paid their utility bill electronically prior to us getting that contract set up with ESN. So that's already helped a lot. We've seen a big difference in, in folks that typically mail in a check and going online and paying that way. And also we will not be assessing, this is actually per the governor and the Public Service Commission, but utility will not be assessing late payment fees either. So that's the biggest change we've seen over the last couple of weeks.
All right. Thanks JJ.
Oh, I have a question for JJ real quick. I've read some articles that sewage districts are monitoring for virus. Have you heard anything about Madison Met participating in any type of study like that?
I have not. I've got a few contacts over there though. I could do some digging and see what they've done. So every, everything they've put out or shared with us, their customer communities has been kind of just general. Nothing specific about what they're doing, testing.
Yeah, it seems like it's kind of.
We also represent, we also represent Madison Met, so I can look into that too.
I know Madison's always on the forefront of research, so I thought maybe they might be. Thanks.
Good question. All right, then we'll move on to communication miscellaneous business. First up is consideration of the vouchers. Any questions with them?
I had one question on page six. The, for stone lumber for the tent rental for the spring primary, I just wanted to, are we keeping track of that expense for payback from FEMA or the feds or whatever? Like, would that be considered part of that?
Yes. Yeah, that'll, that'll be something that if it's, if it hasn't been submitted, I think, I think Sean may have passed that along to Matt, but it's, it's on my list, so.
Great.
And this is John.
And actually, one more thing. Go ahead, John. I'll wait.
No, go ahead. You got the floor.
Okay, real quick, JJ, for the, on page seven, for the utility sales and service for the annual inspection on the bucket truck, that's you, right?
Yep.
Okay, is that how much it usually costs? Or is special this year?
No, it's, let me just refresh my memory on that. Yeah, I think last year it may have been seven hundred something. It's the, the technician is paid well or at least charged well for the hourly rate. So I, I think he was here for probably half a day doing the inspection on that. Then there's just small maintenance items they take care of. So that's right around what it was last year.
Okay, thank you.
John, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. The last page, I see Tom Beacon's got about twenty-four thousand dollars worth of inspections. And obviously he retired about four months ago. And our current inspector, it looks like there's only about twenty-five hundred dollars worth. Curious how many more inspections Tom has scheduled in when we're actually gonna make the full transition to the, the new inspection firm.
It's a good, good question, John. The, the full transition has happened, it's, it's more of a lag in who issued the permits. So any permits issued by Tom, he continues the inspections on. So, and, and I, I would think the bulk of this is Cottage Grove Common, so that's why it's as expensive as that is. So, and, and that'll be ongoing for a while. So any, any twenty-nine, twenty nineteen permits issued by Tom, he'll continue to inspect on unless he wants to pass those off to general engineering. And then so far this year, there just hasn't been, you know, an overabundance of building permits so far. But we're just getting into construction season now, so there should be some more for general engineering.
Okay, and I don't have the general ledger accounting number cheat sheet in front of me. Is that one hundred? Is that just out of the general fund?
Yes, building inspection is general fund, but it's a, we essentially break even with a revenue with, at approximately the same amount.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, I have one more question before you hold off on that, Troy. So this is for JJ. We did some sewer telescoping or television. Is that because of all the fiber work and are we charging that back to some of these? Or is that just our normal check in the system, make sure things are, are all where they should be and all connected and everything?
Yep, that's our, just our annual televising. And actually found a, a pretty substantial leak that depending on when they invoice us, you'll see the repair that the contractor's made for us. But that's just our annual televising. Yep, we did nearly twenty-one thousand feet of sewer.
Well, it's good we found the, certainly if there was an issue, it's good we found it then before it became a bigger issue. All right, now Troy, you, you want to make a motion then?
Yeah, please. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, second by John. Any further discussion or questions? Having heard them then, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence.
I did get something from Hydrate. Dave from Hydrate called me today and he wanted to drop off a check for the emergency government. They give an annual donation usually, so I have a check here. It's written to the village of Cottage Grove for two thousand dollars. I wasn't sure how to get that to you, Deb or Lisa, or how is best to do that, the paper check?
You can just, if you want to, just drop it in the Dropbox, that would be fine.
Like the bill pay Dropbox?
Yep.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Sure.
If I, Mr. President, if I may comment. I did receive notification today that Hydrate is canceling their May 28th Day of Giving. They are still planning on donating $1,000 to Parks and Rec, but the actual ceremony has been canceled for this year.
Alright, thanks, Sean. Anybody else have any correspondence? I think we had, the entire Board got a couple email messages in the last couple days from a couple citizens, which we'll keep from North Lawn, where we'll keep those on record and on file regarding the school agreement, which sounds like from what Larry said is, is it's been approved by the school district or school board. So it's probably good information, good feedback, but a bit late, I think, now at this point with that.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to that? Was that issue, it sounded like it was the right-of-way issue. Was that one raised earlier? It felt like a new issue being raised?
It was not a new issue. It was discussed way back June or July about how those three roads needed to be changed from the comprehensive plan. Originally in the comprehensive plan, they were going to go all the way through, straight through to Bus Road. Because the school has that property now and they're going to do something quite different, which is fine. We need to turn them north and connect them because they couldn't be dead ends necessarily or anything like that because they're just too long. It wouldn't make sense from emergency perspective. So that's when the connection and everything, there was designed on what's then to say that, you know, potentially there'd be homes or something like that along those, along that section of the road. Matt, anything else to add or Aaron?
Aaron, if you want to say anything about the comp plan, but before the school was proposed there, it was always planned to be a neighborhood. So the expectation when those, when those homes were built and Weston Fort had was that that would be a continued neighborhood someday. And obviously, that's not the full scope of what's going on over there. But as those roads continue, in order to be consistent with the comp plan, it made sense to continue a block of residential lots. Is that an accurate description here?
Yeah, North-South Street was always part of the plan. We just allowed them to move it further east to make room for the school.
Decision to make it 30 feet versus 120 feet? Was that, what was that based on? Because it sounded like the residents wanted 30 feet next to them instead of 120. Was there, how do we come up with that distance?
If I recall, I think MSA had put in the conditions, it was something like a minimum of 15. I think we had kind of left it up to the school district. If it's 120 feet, then they could put a lot in that they could potentially sell to recoup some of the costs of putting the street in. If it's 30, then it's really just a green space that the district would have to take care of, but they wouldn't really get any value from it.
So it was the district's decision for the 120 feet?
Yeah, I don't think that came from us. That was something we had suggested that they could do numerous times.
And so in the end, in the developer's agreement, does it specify, is it 120? Or does that not get specified in the developer's agreement?
Yes. Yeah, that is specified in the developer agreement. But those roads won't be built for some time and there's always the possibility that if they wanted to do something different, that they could reengage with the village about what that might look like. And that could depend also on what happens to the north. So if they just want to build the roads and put them in, the 120 feet is where they would have to have that spacing. But the lot can happen in five years.
Thanks. I was just trying to understand what the folks were really getting at with the emails, so.
Yeah, the district representatives, once that came up in their, in the Board, they were, I think, they didn't anticipate a discussion on that aspect of the project, I don't think. But then so they didn't have a chance to be responsive right in that meeting on that topic. But, you know, they went back and looked at it, as did we, and it's been set as a, you know, a requirement in this project for, you know, since the beginning of approvals. So it wasn't a new change.
Alright, so then we'll move on to upcoming community events. We have our virtual race going on. Get your 50K in.
Yeah, just curious if there's been any communication with the fire department about the festival? Has that been officially canceled? Has that been delayed? Is there any discussions at all, I guess?
I heard through the Chamber of Commerce, because the question was asked last week, that they're holding off, I think they were holding off for the current stay-at-home order and looking at the specifications, but they haven't made a decision as of last Wednesday.
Alright, alright, thank you very much.
Alright. I don't know if we have any other items. Earth Day is Wednesday, so if you can get out and social distance, maybe with a family member and pick up some stuff around your area, your house, maybe in the park or wherever nearby, strongly encourage it. I've seen opportunity in my walks, so I'll be out on Wednesday myself. And I have a helper who's coming along with me as well. Then the other thing I want to do real quick before going on to future agenda items, this is John Russell's last meeting as a trustee, I believe. I, for one, I think, assuming the rest of the Board, would like to thank John for his service to the Board, to all the various committees over the years. I know that John will continue to be involved in community through the Chamber. He is still involved in some of the committee members, committees as well. So John, thank you for that.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Thanks, John.
Thanks. Now you got it, Tom.
Yeah. And then the other thing is just to congratulate both Melissa and Troy on being re-elected. And then we will invite a new member when we come up next time as well, so trustee. So Matt will be bringing him along up to speed as well.
Thank you, President Williams.
Future agenda items. I think, Matt, anything that you see on the radar?
Yes, just today, we received, I received an update memo from Associated Appraisal as far as their work on the internal market update, also known as, you know, revaluation. So we're going to invite them to the next, the next Board meeting or at least one of the two Board meetings in May. Hopefully, they can come and answer questions. And then we're reaching out to them to see what their plan is as far as public outreach, because that was an important part of the proposal with them too, is to help us get the word out there in a couple different ways.
Alright. Then we move down to, I think, the last item here, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second then, it's undebatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.